All right, it's 5:30. Time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Glad you're here. Up on the agenda, we have an executive session. It concerns personal matters of non-elected personnel. And that will take both commissioners, myself and Dan Reynolds. And we will need, gentlemen, what do you consider time-wise?
Shouldn't take long, should it?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
That sounds good.
Yeah, you need to read the... Yeah.
Okay. In the document. Okay. Okay, I move that we recess for an executive session for discussion of an employee's performance pursuant to the Non-Elected Personnel Exception, KSA 75-43, 19B1. The open meeting will resume at, what, 5:42? All right. Do I?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, the meeting is back in session. We move to the adoption of the agenda. Gentlemen, I have two items that I would like to add to the agenda. Number one...
The consent agenda?
Consent agenda, excuse me. Common consent agenda. Item number one is accept the resignation of the city manager and authorize the mayor to sign the resignation agreement and general release. And item two that I would like to add to the common consent agenda would be appoint Kelly Passier as acting city manager until city commissioners can meet and discuss further.
I had a couple items I would like to remove from the consent agenda for discussion. One would be appropriations. And the next item is item F. I'd like to move it to items for commission action after item A.
So do I have a motion to approve the... I make a motion to approve the common consent agenda, items B, C, D, and E.
First, the modification of the agenda. Adoption of the agenda was modified.
Okay, sorry. Get ahead of myself. Okay. We have an agenda that's been modified and we need to adopt the agenda. So do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now moving along to the common consent agenda. We are pulling item A and item F for commission action. So we are going to approve items B, C, D, and E of the common consent agenda. Do I have a sec...
Plus the two new ones.
Oh, plus the two new ones.
G and H or...
G and H, sorry. Bear with me here. G and H have been added to that. So we're going to approve B, C, D, E, G, and H. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. Moving forward, we're moving to presentations. Item A, presentation of the 2020 library budget request. Hi, sir, how are you today?
I'm fine. My name's Tom Sewell and I'm a treasurer with the City Library. And we're here to request the mill levy and an additional $25,000, which is what we've received in the past years. We're not asking for any additional funding or anything like that, just basically what we've been receiving. So I don't have really much else to add to that. Keep it short, but that's really all that we have to request.
That's really short.
Yeah, it's really short.
Must be an accountant or something.
Yeah. Get right to the point.
All right. All right, Tom, thank you. Gentlemen?
I don't have any questions.
You didn't give us much to question. As you indicated, it's what we've been allotting to the library in the past, so you're not asking for any crease in that. We'd like to see that continue.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll take your recommendation into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. Item B, presentation of the 2020 Main Street budget request. Tabitha, Lisa, how are you today?
Good evening. I'm Tabitha from Independence Main Street, and I am joined with Lisa Hugo, my board president. And I have some board members present, Ray Rothgibb, Jim Hayward, and Julie Isley. So they all sit on my board. I don't think they'll want to address you tonight, but...
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk to you about our passion with Main Street and what we do here. We want to thank you for your past support. It means a lot to our small organization so that we can do big things throughout our community. And we've put together a short slideshow for you to kind of show, highlight some of the things that we have done and some of the projects we're pretty proud of, so...
You're going to talk more than Tom did, then?
I am, sorry.
Our screen is not on.
Okay, so we do do the sidewalk sale, and I did not put up my new flyer this year with the power incredibles. And we've done the pub crawl, and it's a great success if you've been down there. We recently added Sippin' Shops. There's the pub crawl, and that's a great turnout for all of our eateries downtown in the Booth Hotel. It's a great pool from out of town. The Sippin' Shops and the Let's Whine About winter, we do the Sippin' Shops and we do the coupons for those for our eateries downtown. Last year, we started the First Thursdays and we'll continue those this year. We've added the Ladies Night Out at the Booth Hotel, and that's been a great time. And this is one of our favorite ones, the Veterans banners. They're a great big hit all throughout the community. And last year, we added the ICC Main Street Block Party. We're in charge of the open houses and the parade and the carriage rides we do through downtown. We do the Main Street gift certificates that keeps all your money local. We had the Small Business Saturday. And recently, our hanging baskets that are downtown. And I wish I would've got some more updated pictures. Those were the ones when we first put them up. And now, if you've seen them, they are really blooming and pretty. And I have to give Jim and Rhonda a big thank you for that because they water them every day, and so that's a big chore. So I want to thank them for that. So I just wanted to add, you know, everyone on our board is very passionate, and we are proud of the stuff that we do downtown. We're hoping to add more baskets downtown throughout the three blocks and on down to Brothers and the Science Center and a couple blocks on Main. I think everyone that has seen them has just been, they're just really nice. We do have to figure out how to keep all those watered, because I don't want Jim and Rhonda to get up at four o'clock in the morning. So anyway, I'm going to let Lisa talk to you a little bit, too.
Okay. Thank you again for letting me speak as well. This year, Main Street, in the past, we have requested $20,000 to help us with our budget. And this year, we're requesting a $5,000 increase. And we're asking that you maybe look somewhere. I know the money's tight, but we've got a lot of other things we still want to continue to do. I just want to point out, we're very careful with our spending, and we have a one-man show and her board. And so we really, we really, through our fundraising and all the things we do, we really try to spend as wisely as we can. We know there's lots of Christmas decorations. Some of them kind of burned up last year. We're working on trying to get some of those done through some of the monies through our fundraiser, like Tabitha mentioned, with the flowers. I want to also point out that through some of the events that Tabitha's done, the shop and sips and all those things, we're not only getting money from our local residents, but we're bringing in money from outside our area. I know on the pub crawl, there were people from Parsons, Coffeyville, Chinute, surrounding areas. So really working to make Independence a destination and bring people in from around other parts as well to help, you know, sustain. When you look downtown, the number of empty buildings is fewer and fewer. So I think that's the Main Street, the economic restructuring, really has been trying to work to get more people in downtown. Parking has become a problem, which is a good problem to have. So just all those kinds of things. It's like, it's just nice to see that we've got such an active downtown, and a lot of people that will come to town will say, oh, my gosh, you guys have a great downtown. I can't believe, or, you know. And so I just think it's important that we keep striving and Tabitha's efforts and our board's efforts to continue to keep that going and not only sustain what we have, but, you know, move beyond that. So again, I guess if you have questions for us, we can answer those, hopefully. Otherwise, we just want to thank you for your time and consideration of a $5,000 increase in our budget.
I was going to ask, according to the information I got, that this is the first increase that you've asked for. I guess over the last several years, we funded $20,000 for, I don't know how many years back this goes, but it's been several anyway.
I think Main Street used to be an employee of the city maybe, and then when they stopped that, they gave them $20,000, and it's been that ever since.
Actually, it was more than that at one time, and the previous commission decreased it.
But then it's been frozen at 20 for several years.
Okay.
And one thing, I forgot to put a slide in, was the parking lots that we have been doing those. We put a new sign up at the municipal parking lot that looks really great. I should've got a picture of that for you. I might send it to an email. But we went in on Love Independence Day, and we weeded it, and we sprayed for weeds, and then we remarked the lines, and it looked so much nicer where they would put the sign up. We are going around and taking notes of the stuff that needs to be done at the other parking lots so that we can try to get those better. With April and Cleese Harrison, we held a meeting and talked about what we can do for parking, and they felt like they wanted it to be safer parking. They wanted us to check on the lighting, mark the lines. So Main Street took that on as trying to get that done and then encourage, you know, business owners and building owners downtown to utilize those parking, public parking spaces now. We can't make them, but we will encourage that. And once we have them all cleaned up and good lighting, I don't think that should be a help of the issue, so.
Okay, that would be great. I've heard a few of the, a couple of the businesses, I won't name, but they had talked about not having parking for their customers.
Yes.
That the people that work downtown or have offices are parking in those slots and not parking in the municipal lot. So it's discouraging people from wanting to pull in and shop in some of these areas because they can't find a parking slot.
Yeah, it is. So we're hoping by cleaning those up and putting new signage up, and I don't know if you've noticed the one at Menace Park, but it looks really nice. We got, Jim painted it, and then we ordered the signage, and so it looks really nice. And so hopefully, we can get one behind Big Cheese and all the other ones. We need to identify which ones the city actually owns so that we can, because I know there's some over by the Arco Building and between, there's a section of that one, I guess, that is the city's. Not sure, but we need to, because it needs some work over there, too, so.
Okay. Were you part of the meeting that the business owners had where they were talking about trying to address the problem of parking downtown?
Yes, we headed that, yes.
Oh, okay. And that...
These were their concerns, was that they needed cleaned up and the lighting, and so that's what we've tried to take on, is getting those cleaned up and ready to go, and we've remarked them. So hopefully, we just got to figure out a nice way to ask those business owners and employees to... And we did. At one time, we took some lifesavers and put them in a bag and put a nice note on there that says, be a lifesaver and utilize public parking, and we put, it's only 2,000 steps to that parking lot. I don't know how well it was received, but we tried, so.
Well, good, good for you. I'd like to see that happen, because I have had a couple people complain about that. So good luck. I hope that works out, and I hope they take you up on that offer, and they do park in the municipal lots and make parking available for customers that want to shop.
Once we get those parking lots all cleaned up, we'll send a letter out to the business owners and say, you know, here's what you asked us to do. We've done this. Now can we ask your employees to please utilize those? So hopefully, by the end of the summer...
Maybe even, too, educating our customers also that there's available parking. I know people don't necessarily always want to walk, but, you know, I mean, bigger cities, if you go downtown, you got to park in a garage or something and walk, so.
That's true.
Any other?
Okay, gentlemen, any other questions?
Do you have a mission statement? Originally, when Main Street started, it dealt more with the design and preservation. And I think through the years, the description of what you're talking about doing now changes, but it would help me distinguish exactly what your goals are and what direction that you're going and kind of compare, you know, the chambers role and Main Street. It would really help looking at this and know where we can maybe step in where you stop or partner, work together with...
We do have a mission and vision statement, and I could e-mail out to you.
That'd be great. I really appreciate it.
I probably should.
Yeah, and that's what I really wanted, just mailed to us.
We do have four committees within our Main Street. We have a design committee that works on doing the flowers and anything, and the signage. And then we have an economic development team that just looks at different ways that we can help our small business owners, you know, with all sorts of the different problems they may have.
Promotions.
We have promotions that does all the activities that you see downtown, and then the fourth one is...
Organization.
Yes, our organization, which does our fundraiser and stuff like that.
And like our, trying to get our members and things like that for Main Street.
If you could include that, too, that would really, really help. Thank you.
I see that you have fundraiser income of about 30 thou. Is that just the one event?
Yes. And, you know, they ask us to do more fundraisers, but I kind of feel like that is taking, you know, for me to go and ask for donations from our small businesses downtown to hold another fundraiser when I'm supposed to be bringing business to them. So I kind of feel like the, and everybody does so many fundraisers, I kind of feel like the one big one is good enough, and if we can find funds elsewhere by doing, bringing in, you know, out of town, doing something there versus having another fundraiser where I'm asking donations from our small business owners. I just, I hate to do that to them. They get, I was in there one day somewhere, and with 10 minutes, and three people came in asking for donations, you know. I feel bad for them, so I definitely don't want to take from them when I'm supposed to be trying to get them more business, so.
The rumor is you're hoping to outline the downtown buildings like the Country Club Plaza with lights. Is that just rumor?
No, that is actually true.
We forgot to address that.
Yes.
We were talking about Christmas decorations. We are planning to light all the buildings in the...
From Maple? What's, yes. From Brother, that block there, all the way down to Annie Mays, and then on each side road, go down about 10 feet. Annie Mays will go all the way to the alley. We got a bid on that, and it wasn't as bad as we thought it was going to be. Just the lighting is going to be about 17,000. And then Travis Blankenship said that he would work with us on doing the electrical work for that. He does a lot for us on First Thursdays and stuff, so we're very grateful to him. And so we're going to team up with YPI and see if we can't get a fundraiser going to get that, make that happen. So it will include having to, because they'll be on their year round, they'll be on a timer from probably, you know, dusted on, or they'll go off at midnight. So come on, six-ish, when it starts getting dark, and go off at midnight. So it won't be that big of an expense. They're LED lights. They have a 10-year guarantee, and that's if they're running 10 hours a day, and they're not going to be running that long. So I think they'll last for quite a while. So we're excited to team up with YPI and work on that, so. But we'll have to get permission from our building owners, because they'll be drilling into the tops of the buildings to put the, because they'll have to sturdy them on there. So we don't want them to be hanging and blowing around. That'll look terrible, but we do want to do that, so.
Okay. All right, great. I see that you've got your hands full and you have a lot of activities planned, and a lot of your activities seem to kind of overlap with what the chamber's trying to do. So I'm sure you partner ship with them, too?
Yes. We work great with the Chamber and MAC. We all are on the same team. We want what's best for Independence. So, you know, we always, Lisa helps me, I help her. It's just kind of a team effort, so I can't talk, you know, enough good about our relationship, so.
Sure. All right, great. Ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, yes. All right, moving on to items for commission action. Gentlemen, do we want to move to what we pulled off from the common consent agenda and move them up to the beginning of this? And then we'll get into the items for commission action as are listed?
Yeah.
Would that work?
Appropriations. Can I wanted to, item F, it was after the procurement policy. Those seem to go together.
Go together.
In my mind, they do. But I had a question about...
The appropriations.
Appropriations. It was, and Lacey, it was the email that we received this afternoon on the economic development money for Morrison Builders. I didn't recall if, when I looked through the budget, if that was transferred over and whether we used it all and the application. Because when we talked about helping out with the work, I thought it was specifically related to work, but on the application we got for payment, like structural oversight, general conditions, I wasn't for sure what site improvement and public safety was included, structural support, tuck pointing, framing, roofing. We talked about doors and windows at the time we allocated the $100,000, but to get their figure up, you add in the structural oversight, general condition, site improvement, which doesn't relate to a building, plus overhead and profit. And then we use that total to determine how much of our $100,000 was going to give, and I thought it was just basic for repairs, not general condition and particularly overhead and profit.
Well, I can tell you where we came from on that, if you'd like.
I'd like to see the application and what we were calling out in, that would qualify the description. So, because, you know, to figure in overhead and profit for our...
This is a unique project, because normally, you have a building owner who contracts a contractor to come in. This is a building owner who happens to be a contractor. So if you were to go out for quote or bid, that would all be in that project cost. So that's why we allowed that, because it's, they had profit and overhead that would've been in a regular contract had they contracted with somebody. So we didn't feel like we should penalize them for being a contractor themselves. It actually saved on the, saved on it because we didn't have the markup in the markup. So that's why we chose to authorize that for payment. It met, from what we went through, met the program guidelines. Each one of those, they submitted invoices, everything, we went through that. You know, this is part of the whole grant. Staff went through it. We approved it. This is, you know, I believe, a couple of weeks ago, when the water issue was discussed, the commission was notified that there would be about $45,000 that was set aside for this project out of the Economic Development Fund. So this is just at that point in time that they're entitled to that. They've been approved, and so they've just, they've completed the work. We've done the inspections. And so here we are submitting for payment of what we promised them.
Well, that's, that's fine. I'd like to see what we've got included, because still, you know, the idea was not to use structural oversight or particularly site improvements. We're trying to maintain the building, and maybe, I don't know what...
Well, when they're tuck pointing, they've got to court off with, you know, they've got to make it safe, so that's part of the tuck pointing.
So that's fencing.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, that site improvements is usually sidewalks, lawns and grass.
Yeah.
Site improvement was the oversight of your architect, your engineer, just for that little piece of it. You have to realize that they have invested $650,000 to $700,000 in this project.
Yeah, and I got to be accountable for the $45,000 I'm giving out.
Well, and so does city staff, and we have gone through that.
And that's why I'm asking questions, because it wasn't submitted with the application. It was three, four years ago, we authorized $100,000 to go.
Correct.
And, you know, I didn't have time to get, I thought the money was going for the apartments when I saw the appropriations. It was out of Housing Authority. That's why, you know, I had emailed back, Lacey, and I knew with the time schedule of getting everything ready, it would be short, and that's why I requested to bring it off.
I have a copy of the, the application process. I have information on where the grant funds stand right now. We've awarded five grants total. Currently, you have, after this, you have $48,039 left in those funds. We currently have three inquiries for additional buildings. And if you remember, the point of this was, we had all sorts of buildings downtown that had walls falling and collapsing, some that are almost, bricks falling off. The commission approved a minimum maintenance standard that required inspections for all the downtown buildings. And in doing that, the commission said, well, we're also going to assist you in fixing up those structural issues.
Yes.
And so, you know, remember, this building was on the blocks to be condemned, and the estimate for that would've been $100,000 to have torn down. So here we are, spending $45,000 to preserve a building that we're going to have seven apartments, three of them are already leased. We've got commercial space going in. We're collecting sales tax. We're keeping it on the tax roll, you know. So this is what we do called economic development.
And it's also, we have to act under the public purpose doctrine that says that tax funds can only be used for the benefit of the public. It's a very gray area when it goes to economic development, that it has to justify that the economic development is beneficial for the city as a whole. So that's why I'm questioning the overhead and profit, the general conditions. Hey, the roof, the wall is great.
I'm more than happy to answer that.
And all I'm saying is, I needed to see that.
Okay. You know, the challenge that we have is, is, you know, the programs are written and staff or assistance of other outside entities. We go in good faith on these grants or on the codes or on programs as we're the liaison with these people who come to town. And we tell them, here it is, here's the program, here's what you can get. And then when we come back in and we second guess, or we sit there and we tell them, but yeah, or no, which has happened with this entity several times...
And it's not over.
Well, that's, that's... My concern is, is that we are getting that reputation that, don't come to Independence, because they are not, you know, friendly. They're not willing to be worked with. We don't want you to come and invest in our downtown. I believe that that's what the intent of this grant was. That's what we try to do. It puts staff, myself, in a bad position when we, you know, part of this is, we've informed the banks that this is part of what they're going to get, and then we come and it's in jeopardy. That creates a big challenge for staff and for myself and for those people who choose to invest. So, I mean, it does. It puts us in a really bad position.
I agree, it does.
Mm-hmm.
It does. That's why we need to be on the same page from the beginning. And I don't recall...
Well, but I thought we were.
And I thought we were, too. And I didn't think we were going to approve overhead and profit. It was direct cost to the subcontractors, because he definitely did not do the roofing himself. He had a subcontractor do the roof. So that subcontractor had profit, and we're paying overhead and profit upon that. So, that subcontractor had profit, and we're paying overhead and profit upon that. You know, what I'm saying is, we look at allowing direct cost reimbursement for the work that is approved or called out into or limited by the documents. And the, the general conditions dealing with toilets, job trailer, and, and that such. You know, your six thousand dollars is a lot of general conditions for windows, doors, and, and framing and roof. So, you know, I understand it's been promised to him and, and it's been committed. My question was, I'd like to see what we're sending out for applications and, and go from there. And, you know, I'm not going to look at it tonight, but if it can be emailed to me.
More than happy to.
That would, that would help. Then, you know, if it's something that I think we need to look again, we can come back and modify the application. Our, our choice.
Absolutely.
Our desire is to get as much money into actual work being accomplished as we can. And, yeah, he's a general contractor, and he's taken on some of this himself. But the money that we give him for his overhead and profit takes money out of another man's windows that needs it. We're just trying to par it down that, yeah, we can provide some, some help with the buildings, but let's get our dollar to go where it needs to go. And then everyone benefits.
You know, something for Mayor Yasusi's information. This was not driven by city staff or Housing Authority. When the commission chose to do this, we had four roundtables with building owners downtown. I think we had thirty-two percent of the building owners participate in our roundtable discussion, and they are the ones who wrote the grant. They directed how they wanted it and how they wanted it laid out. So, you know, just so that Mayor Yasusi is understanding how this came about. So, I'm more than happy to send you the grant, absolutely, at any point in time. The commission has that authority and right to amend it and change it. If you're going to do that, I ask you to do that before I have these discussions with these next three that have inquired. Because once again, it puts us in a quandary of, you know, we have it on the books and we move forward with what the intent is. We have those meetings, we agree, we let the banks write them letters, let them know. And then we come before the commission and it puts us in a bad position.
But it is, this is a very exceptional project. I mean, normally, a downtown building owner is going to hire a contractor to replace their roof or put in their new windows, whatever, and we're going to use that as our number. But since in this case, the owner is a contractor, I can see, you know, when I see how he put his numbers together, it makes sense to me, but I can also see why Leonard would say, well, wait a minute. Should we really be letting him include his profit and overhead in this? Because he did sub out the roof, and he, he may have subbed out the windows too. So, I, I don't think, I don't think we're that far apart on this. I think Leonard's just questioning a couple of the line items and.
Yeah, that's, normally, our buildings, they're not going to hire a general contractor to put a new roof on.
Right.
Most of what we were talking is tuck pointing that you call Mid-Continent Restoration or a Mason, and you're working, the owner's working direct with a sub. Very seldom will a general contractor be involved to the magnitude. Well, even on your main street building, just the windows, you dealt with one item with the mid.
But this back wall was collapsing. I mean, I, I didn't think the building could be saved. I'm thrilled to be wrong. But I, I can't imagine them tackling something like this without a general contractor. Although, since they are the general contractor, it's.
Yeah, and that's, it, it depends on, like you say, this is a total renovation, that it is a little different.
It is. It's an exception to anything else we've seen.
And that's what, so what are the, the standards that we set? What has gone out for us to approve this? And, you know, you did what you thought you should, and I did what I thought I should. I should question it.
Oh, I have no problems with questions, not at all.
And I.
I just, it puts us in a bad position when we've sat there and said, you know, we've allocated forty-five thousand dollars for this project because they submitted their budget and they submitted their expenses. And now we're, we're questioning whether we're going to give you that. That, that puts us, and it puts the city, in a bad position.
And that's what we're going to work to, to eliminate that bad position. And, and it goes across the board on some other things with this project, too.
So, what do we need to do to move forward? You, you want some further information, some further documentation, or can we prove this as it is?
I got, I think.
Well, they're anticipating being able to pick up their check tomorrow, but that is what it is.
I think what April explained highlights this. I'd still want to see the documents, but I think we can go on.
Go on, go on and improve this as it sits. And the, the questions you had were not so much the, well, it was just an unusual situation because I've been listening to both of you, and this is, this is something very new to me. So, the circumstances.
New to all of us.
The plan we had didn't actually fit this particular situation.
Got to be able to, everything is flow.
And you got to be able to modify.
Yep.
Yep, I understand that point.
Not always, you're not always going to have the exact, you know, you have to go with the flow.
Sure.
When the money was allocated, it was looked at spot renovation, not total building renovation.
Well, that was not the, the group's, the roundtable discussion. It was anything.
I wasn't at the roundtable discussion, and I didn't see the, the forms. And this is the understanding that I had when we discussed it in the commission meeting, that it would be for more unit repairs, spot repairs. So, when you get a project like this that now includes total renovation of the building, we go into a different area. This is where we need to modify our application that says, okay, if you're going to do a roof and do windows, do separate, here it is. But if you're going to do a total building, we're not going to pay you overhead and profit. We're not going to pay you general conditions. You know, we kind of worked ourselves in, into a corner that we didn't address it that way initially. And now we come up with a problem that we've made a commitment that you look at the papers, and if it doesn't say you can include it, then we made a mistake. We, we were wrong in doing that because we missed it. We're not going to miss it again.
And, and you're right. That's why it changes. Yeah.
And that's what we need to have, have two standards or two applications. One based upon total renovation of a building and one dealing with maintenance issues of a building.
The way I remember that conversation is we were hoping to catch problems when they were, you know, in their early stages. So, repair a wall that's collapsing or a roof that's collapsing or windows to keep the building intact. We didn't, I don't remember ever talking about, what if we have a building that's just on the verge of collapsing? Do we want to tackle the whole thing? I agree, we, I don't think we ever talked about that specifically. But on the other hand, the goal of the whole project was to keep our downtown buildings from collapsing. And this one was, I, I think was just about to go. So, I, I applaud the city staff for saying, let's move forward with this.
It had been two years that it kept, the hearing kept being pushed for condemnation.
Yeah. And we still have to watch the use of allocating money.
Absolutely.
With the public purpose doctrine that.
Absolutely, yeah.
We can't fix private ownership of buildings as much as we want because our money is committed to the benefit of the public. And if this case, we're getting apartments, we're getting a business. So, this leads towards economic development.
Absolutely.
But when a building owner can't afford his roof and we put a roof on his building, now we're going into a gray area that with public purpose doctrine, that's not the benefit of the economy. Even though we're preserving his building, we're doing something for him direct that's not increasing the economic benefit for the public. So, you know, we've, we've got a, a tight rope we're walking on. And with this being the first major one, you know, if I sat here and didn't ask or say, hey, I don't think this is the way we should go, I wouldn't be doing my job as commissioner. And if we don't have the discussion to realize that, you know, we shouldn't be going, and that's my opinion, you guys might be very, very on it of, of the overhead and profit. But, you know, it's different when you do a total project renovation that, yes, it does cover into it a little differently than just individual pieces. And the Mason is going to have security fencing to put around to protect his work. He is going to have lifts, and that's going to be figured in there. It just looks different when you go in to the, the total renovation to preservation or stabilization. So, you know, I think that's all for me anyway.
All right. So, as it stands, you're going to send an email to?
I'll send, I'll send the applications out, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, we can, I made notes here that, you know, you're wanting to look at two different applications, one for a total reno and one for just maintenance.
Yep.
And, and looking at the removal of profit and overhead and general conditions.
Yeah, just send the applications out, and then I'll get some notes and to you. That'd be easier than trying to guess, right.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Happy to do that.
That'd be great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, April. As it stands, though, we're, we're moving forward with this amount. Forty-five thousand, one hundred and one dollars and fifty-three cents.
Right.
Okay. Let's just want to make sure I.
So, basically, we're going to approve the appropriations.
Right.
As they are in our packet.
Yes. Okay, next on.
We need to.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the appropriations?
So moved.
Do I?
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Been ahead of myself all day. I don't know why. Okay, four, items for commission action. This will tie in, A will tie in with F, and it involves Lacy in both categories. F would be consider approving a resolution to authorize Lacy Lee's, Director of Finance at Signatory for First National Bank of Omaha, purchase cards. And then it also ties in with item A for commission action, considering approving a resolution to adopt a formal procurement policy. Lacy, you're up. How are you?
Good, good. So, this First Bank Card is the credit card company that I have chosen to go with for purchase cards. And the whole idea and reason of going to a purchase card system over a credit card is there's much more oversight capabilities, checks and balances, limits.
Could you explain the difference between a credit card and a purchase card?
So, that's what, the purchase card allows me to set, I, like, I can set an individualized number of transaction limits on a certain credit card or a dollar transaction. Or I can assign certain, you know, product codes that said, this card can only be used at a gas pump. It can't be used inside of a gas station or to buy X, Y, and Z types of products. They just, they're, they're smarter cards that have more oversight capabilities to them is why I chose a purchase card over a credit card. And there's, there's also increased reporting capabilities. I mean, we can go on to this statement online, and, you know, I can say, any, any purchase, your, your card cannot be used for purchases over three thousand dollars without me physically going into the, the statement and doing a one-time allowance. And, you know, that, that forces compliance with the purchasing policy, you know, that says, we, this, this dollar amount, you have to have so many approvals. You know, it's just an easier way to enforce the purchasing policy.
One question, who all qualifies for a purchasing card?
Department heads.
It's only limited to department heads?
Mm-hmm.
So, in placing an order, they would just give the card number to their vendor?
Yes. I mean, or, you know, if you have an online payment, you'd be using that. You know, on some instances, you know, we've got staff that come and first ask approval. You know, I need to go buy whatever at Walmart. They'll, they'll have to go to the department head and get approval for whatever they're purchasing. You know, there'll still be a system where that will be tracked of who has, who has that, who's making the purchase. It'll be brought back with a receipt, things, things like that. So, I mean, it's not like they'll just be used physically by the department head, but they are in control of it and are, are responsible for, you know, authorizing those purchases, getting receipts, things like that. It's just, we have a card right now. This is just an improvement over our current system. This, this puts more restriction, more limits, more, more oversight than what we currently have.
So, all the department heads already have a card?
I have a single or two cards in my office that they, you know, staff comes and checks it out from me. But I'm not always in my office, you know, it's, it's not the most secure. It's not a best practice. This would, this would help track those checkouts more. It would be, this would be an increase in security for us as well.
So, it, it's basically automatic payment for their order?
Not, I mean, no, the funds aren't taken out of our account right then and there. It's not a debit card. It's a credit card. It works, it functions the same way as a credit card.
So, worst-case scenario, somebody uses their card and makes a purchase that's not approved.
Then they're personally liable. And there's a statement in there that says, you know, I will only use this card for city purposes, for approved purchases, you know, within my spending limits and authority. Any, and it also basically says, anything that, you know, is deemed unauthorized or does not have a corresponding receipt, they're liable for personally, so.
So, the, the limits tied to the limits set in the.
Yes.
Procurement policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
But to make, to use the card, they're actually going to be using it for something that's already been approved? Correct. I mean, they've already brought something before you.
I mean, it'd be like the zoo needs to go get food for the animals. So, I mean, they would go to Barb and get the credit card. And Barb's always going to ask, what is this for, you know? Oh, we're going to get, we're going to Oshlins, and we're getting food. So, they take the card, run up and, and get it. I mean, it functions the same way that we currently do. It's just at Oshlins, they wouldn't be able to buy, you know, whatever dollar limit I set it at. They, you know, they have to stay within their spending parameters. And I have real-time access to see, there's, you can get down to a much more granular level of, of detail on all of the transactions. And, you know, I can have it, with this one specifically, you can actually tie it to our accounting software. And so, Barb can go into the statement, or I can go into the statement and pull up directly GL account numbers that it ties to. I mean, it's a very sophisticated system, and it's, it's proven over and over again that this is the best practice. And most, most businesses and a lot of municipalities have purchase cards rather than credit cards. It's just much more secure.
So, like, I notice in appropriations, we'll have a lot of tire repairs. And at the end of the month, you issue one check to the vendor?
So, these, the way you would see it is like a credit card statement. I mean, you, you see the credit card statement in appropriations. You don't see, you know, every single vendor on the credit card statement. So, that's how that would work. It'd be just like the credit card.
But every purchase is paid for at that time. Like, like I said, right now, you run a, a credit account at a vendor, and at the end of the month, they invoice you, and you pay from that invoice for fifteen tire repairs.
So, no, it's.
Now, with a card, you would, each repair would be.
It'd be on your credit card.
And paid at one time.
And paid at that time, yes. Yes. But I, we would, we can. I mean, we can, we can have a credit card payment in appropriations every meeting or we can do it the meeting before the due date, you know, it's, it's however we want to set it up if you want to see.
No, I'm ju, I'm just asking about the working of the card, not how we see it.
Same, same way that our current credit card goes. I mean, those tire, you know, repairs, they could use the credit card for them. They don't always, but they could. And I, it's a best practice to encourage credit card usage rather than on account. I, I lean towards credit card usage. Another nice thing about utilizing this credit card is there is a rebate program. So, you know, we're getting basically cash back or rebate on our purchases. We're allowing our money to stay in the bank longer and earn interest as well, so it's, it's a win-win.
So the card company generates money by us using the card. So is it like to the, the vendor that, I've heard some of the, the stores that say they pay X percent for every transaction on a card. So we're, we had one statement come from the vendor a month and we paid all of them. They're going to be, every time they accept our card, are they charged a?
They, they would, I mean, every, every vendor, that's the way credit cards work. It's usually, you know, a three percent fee or whatever it is. I, I think that the city will work with our local vendors that we utilize for one-off, you know, running to the store. And it's not to say we can't put things on account, but then when we get our statement, we will pay it with the credit card. Is, is the way we would handle it.
Yeah. You kind of see it both ways where you're, you're going to Woods or Sayers or?
We're not going to run our card for three dollars for some screws and nails.
Right, right. There, it becomes a lot of work and a lot of money for them instead of, I'll just bill you at the end of the month and?
Right.
Pay your ticket.
Yep.
That's what, just trying to get a full understanding of what you're, you're asking and anticipating, so.
So then you have, so you have standing purchase orders with some of the vendors now, like?
Accounts.
Accounts, huh? Purchase orders. Westar used to have purchase orders for the lumberyard and various vendors around town. And you could go in and if you, if you didn't have it in the storeroom and you needed something right, then you could basically go in and purchase it?
On account, yeah.
On account. And they'd give you a ticket, you'd turn it into the, to the office and they would take care of it from there. So, so you, you have two cards now, so you're basically using the system.
Well, we don't always, currently, for those, we're paying with a check. I, I don't see that as a best practice. We should be limiting the number of checks we cut, we should be paying on the credit card. With people I've spoken to, they highly encourage that to reduce the number of checks. So really, there's no, there won't be really any change from how we're working with our local vendors. You can still have, still have an account, still get a statement at the end of the month. We're just going to change it on our end of, we're going to pay that with our card instead of a check.
Okay. And you said you have two cards now. When you're, when you're not around, who's in charge of the cards? Is someone, would that be Dave or someone else that's designated to?
Typically, someone will, you know, Dave or one of the ladies up front will get them into my office. My door's usually shut if I'm not there. And there's a sign-out sheet and it requires you to, you know, your name, initial that you'll bring back your receipt, the card that you're taking, the vendor that you're going to. And when you turn the card in, you have to initial that it's turned in and put the amount of the receipt with the receipt and the card. This is how it currently works.
Okay. And you said if someone violates that policy, that they're held accountable? And what, what are the consequences when you say held accountable?
You have to pay for it personally.
Okay. So it's a way of, of keeping track that, that everything's on the up and up?
Mm-hmm.
And, okay.
It still has to have the checks and balances. That's why there, there's always new radar detectors.
Yeah, there's always a way around something.
There's always, there's always somebody can figure a way around it and you've got to be.
Vigilant.
Yeah, it'll never be perfect.
But these cards are very smart, so it's definitely a step in the right direction. I was blown away by the presentations I've seen. They do a lot of neat things.
And it basically gives you, if you want, pretty much up to the minute. If you chose to, to view it in that timeframe, you could look at something as often as you want.
Yep.
And then track that and see how it's being used.
And I can turn it off with a click of a button if I need to.
And you can change the limit, you can do anything?
I can do anything, yes.
Anything, change the limits, yeah. Hmm, okay. Interesting. Gary? Okay.
No, I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Let's move to, it's on here as consider approving a resolution to adopt a formal procurement policy. And when we had our last work session, I've battled this.
Are you going to approve this separate? I think this has a separate motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself too. Okay, I got way ahead of myself. Okay, gentlemen, if there's no more questions. Let's see here. We have a revolution, a resolution to approve a resolution to accept the First National Bank of Omaha commercial card agreement as provided to the commission. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Okay. Item A, item for commission action. This was approving a resolution to adopt a formal procurement policy. And I've gone back and forth on this. And so if, if anybody gets the blame for this being delayed, then point to me because I am, and I mentioned that at our, at our work session, and I mentioned it to you prior to that. Due to where we've been over the last few years, I, I've really battled with these dollar amounts. And, and even at the work session at the end, I've, I've, I've made it a point that, you know, this is subject to change because I, I was not feeling comfortable with it. And I think the limits that we've set are extremely high.
I think that if you look, look around at other organizations, other municipalities, I, I don't think that they're off. And, you know, I, at our last work session, I provided you with some statistics of if we were to lower those dollar amounts, the, the increase in, in administrative duties that you're going to, to put on the staff are just, they, they far outweigh, in my opinion, my professional opinion, they far outweigh the benefit. And they, they don't, my concern is the, the issues that I think that you have, I think they can be addressed, be addressed in other, more effective and efficient manners. I, I caution you to, to just say the, the solution to all of our problems is to have really low limits. I, I don't think that that's the best answer.
The statistics you showed us, we'd be approving thirty things at every meeting or something as our member.
It would be, it would be a lot. And, and so, you know, if you have those concerns, I, I think they're, they're very, very valid and I would like to work with you to find other ways of addressing those rather than just jumping to, oh, let's, the, the best way must be to lower the limit. Because I, I don't see that as efficient and effective use of our, our time. It's costly.
Then why don't we, we've got another meeting next Wednesday. Why don't we just, that way maybe we can give it Lacy between now and then? And then we can bring it up at the Wednesday meeting.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Okay.
Because I've gone back and picked out various appropriations on several of the meetings that we've had. And, and I'll discuss what I was thinking about as a limit and look, looking at how many would have to come before the commission for approval. And, and most of the time, it was, it was less than ten at a meeting.
And I can give you the, I, I ran a report, I, I ran a, a report for all appropriations, all purchase orders in 2018 and went off of that data. I mean, it's.
And maybe it's not all, maybe it's certain areas too, you know? I see the procurement policy tying with the budget and the way you set the two up, you know, so we don't have to approve when donuts purchases get to be above that limit. Now we got to approve every donut purchase. But, and the same with tire repairs, you know, I think that's, that would give Louis, we talk about, let him visit with you, we bring it up next week, then we can hear what he had concerned and a lot less pressured. And you can hear where he's going, then come back and, and let us know. Because there's got to be a balance.
As far as ideas, as far as, you know, different ideas to, for a solution to the issues you're having, yeah, I think that's, that would be great.
And then, and then other things that you mentioned about how maybe we can address some of these issues we've had in the past, you said you have some better ways that we could do that?
If you, if you, yeah, if you let me know exactly what, you know, what the issue is and where you think the problem is, I think a better way is to brain, brainstorm a solution for that, for that issue rather than putting a blanket, you know, limit over everything. That's, that's not really the intent of what, what you really want to do.
Sure. And, and that's not what, what I, I want to do, but.
But I think that's what would happen if, if we bring the limits down a lot. I think that's what would end up happening. So that's, that's my concern. I'd rather address those things, you know, upfront in a more, in a manner that's actually going to solve that problem and not create others.
Okay.
So talk about it at a work session next week?
Which will also be talking about the budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The more the merrier.
Yeah. So.
I think the communication with the whole thing up front eliminates a lot of problems. And, you know, because you look at, with the limit that we set now, twenty-five thousand, then the forty-five thousand dollar approval would have had to come to the commission for approval under that. But you can look, I think we need to look at the areas that there could be some concern in, like if it's workers' comp, building insurance, you know, there's a lot of things that I'm sure can exceed any limit or a smaller limit. But, you know, there can be parameters set in the procurement policy or purchasing policy that would eliminate what you're saying could happen. But yet by tweaking our policy, it can satisfy Louis's concerns too.
Possibly.
I think the main thing is we haven't had a written procurement policy for years. So why push through? Why not take the time to talk it out and get as comfortable as we can? Because a good solution, all people hurt a little in.
Yeah.
Where we all give a little and we're all walking away with a little pain is better than coming away that I really feel good, I got what I wanted and, and walk away, no, I didn't get anything. So I think there's, there's some areas we can still tweak the policy that maybe can solve your concerns and also solve Louis's concern. But, you know, if we, and, and since if we're going to do budget next Wednesday, I think that's where this really ties in. We can't separate, we've got a budget, we've got a procurement policy, we've got a purchasing card. They're all talking about one thing and they all need to mesh together. And we're going to have to look at all of them to balance out, to have an effective program. And we're going into new territory because, you know, the thing, when it comes to budget time, it takes time for us to look it over, listen, go back and look it over. You know, you just can't, here it is, now prove it. Because we got a time constraint. And the more time we can talk it over ahead of time, the approval comes easier.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, my, my intention is not to make this cumbersome. I just, I just think there's a comfort level there and I'd like for you to hear my thoughts on it and what I think. And then we can kind of sit and talk about this and I think maybe you can.
Could I ask if, if you know some of those concerns, you know, just off the top of your head, could you email me so that I have, you know, I, I come to the meeting prepared? You know, I, I sometimes, since I haven't been here long?
Sure.
And don't know all of the history, sometimes I like to do a little bit of digging on my own. And I think I'll be better equipped to, to problem solve with you if I have an idea of where you're coming from.
Okay. I'll, I'll be glad to do that.
Okay.
If you, if you want to meet, you know, in person, that's fine.
Okay.
My schedule is probably pretty more flexible than your schedule is, so I'll make my time available to meet yours at your convenience.
Okay.
But yeah, I'd be happy to do that. But I did want to bring that up. So reiterate again, I'm the holdup, so don't be blaming anybody else. You want to blame somebody, blame me. Fine. Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Gentlemen?
It's your fault.
Okay. I'll, I'll go with that.
Thanks, Lacy.
Thank you, Lacy. Okay. Item B, consider text amendments to Appendix B zoning of the city code, including Appendix A, listing of permitted and conditional uses regarding communication towers. Mr. McBride, how are you today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Good to be here tonight and to be with all of you. For once, I'm here not practicing on drawing your caricatures, so.
Thank you for that.
I'm actually Vice, Vice Chair of the Plan and Zoning.
We're so glad that you're standing right there where you're standing, dude.
How do you know I'm standing? Well, thank you very much for taking this time once again, seeing us, especially on the communication tower that we're trying to work out. And I, as you have before you, we have come up with a, with a new amendment, I hope, or at least a consideration. And I hope you've had a chance to look at it and so go from there, see what questions you might have. I, I will tell you that, that the, the zoning board, the plan and zoning, has worked diligently on the last several meetings we've had, trying to work this out. We, our major, our only objective in this whole thing was to see that Westar can place their tower in place, replace the tower that they currently have with one that meets their technology needs. With keeping this simple enough though, so it doesn't open a Pandora's box to other things happening. And it, it's been really difficult. So with that, you guys, I thank you guys for looking at it also. It's been enlightening, it's worn us out, but we appreciate your, your diligence. So, any questions?
Okay. I have three. Well, I have one that concerns.
I think they're on the next item.
On the next four, C four, C.
Steve's for both of them.
Steve's is for both of them. So, okay. I just saw these. All right. Sorry, Steve.
Yeah, I had a question, going through all the information and then doing some review to the city code and looking up, it seems unique that they've got a tower, it's too short, we're replacing a tower. Why are we opening up towers to C two and C four zones when it's got the one vendor, one company? Well, I noticed in our code, we've got an accessory use. I was doing some research on accessory use and right below accessory use, it says accessory use communication tower. And in it, it deals with that and it, it has that it's maintained and used by governmental units, public schools and public colleges, on private-owned and such entities. I thought, well, why couldn't we text them in to put utility companies? Then. On private owned and such entities. I thought, well, why couldn't we text them in to put utility companies? Then we wouldn't open it up to the hassle of looking at other C two and C four zones, but it would deal specifically with the problem we have. And since we've got accessory use, which according, looking through accessory use, it does apply that it's a direct association with West Star. That we could still not have to deal with C two and C four zones, but it looked like that one item in the definition and then that tied back to the communication section that you were modifying. So we could get the the same thing accomplished because it'd have to go to a conditional use permit. But we wouldn't open up our other zones to the communication towers.
I actually looked at that when this came to us, cause this started several months ago. And actually, that is the first section I looked at and I saw that section and I thought about adding the utilities there as a possible text amendment. But then I was concerned about, you know, what do you call a utility? And you got utilities all over town and all the rightaways and things and I, you know, there could be a potential, it might open up some other things. So that's why I kinda looked at the the other approach is modifying the conditional permitted use tables, requiring the conditional use. Those still requires a public hearing and if you have those property owners, you know, they still have the ability to to come to a meeting and and voice their concerns, but actually, that is the first place I went. And the first email I sent to Jeff on this actually had that, you know, there's this section, do we add utilities there? But, you know, then I got a little concerned about, well, where are all the utilities at, you know, how is that could? You know, before, it's mainly just for public and schools and education and I thought if we open that up, because those are all governmental entities and then you're opening up to utilities which are private. And so I, you know, I kinda, I kinda wondered if that might open up some other cans of worms, so I wasn't. So I I ended up ultimately not recommending going that way, but that is where I first went, the first thing I I thought of when I first looked at it is I found that as well.
Cause I could see somebody wanting just to put up a tower and I've got an agreement or I I purchase a C two or C four. And I don't have any business that needs it, but I can make some money by having a tower, like a repeater tower or something. And do it there that, you know, I I see what utility is too broad and I don't know. West Star, Atmos and Cable One, I think we received franchise.
Well, the fiber optics, everything, and there's a lot of things you can define as a utility and that's why I was concerned. Cause all those other definitions were, like I said, public and then you're kinda bringing private in there and I didn't know if that was the intention, so.
But if you could tie in a franchise tax, that that limits, so that's not gonna open it up to wideband and everyone at the time. But if you could come up with the wording that then it still can preserve our C two and C four zones. And then bring that control back, cause you sure don't wanna go with a broad term of utility only.
Right.
And then now you're dealing with, you know.
It's it's very complicated because also we have gotten a request and and Jeff's not here, but he's been kinda dealing with it on somebody to bring these antennas in and putting them on on all the utility poles, you maybe, are you familiar with that at all? And he's been researching that, which may require some additional text amendments because there's technologies just changing. But these aren't big utens, antennas, but they would be all over and all these different utility poles and there might be a thing where they pay, you know, a franchise tax or something like that, so I think Jeff is looking into that. So and he actually talked about that at our planning commission, meaning that that's coming. So I mean, there are a lot of changes, we just thought this will be a way to do what they need to do, but also it's going through that conditional use process, so it's not an automatic thing. They don't always approve all the conditional uses if you get somebody, you know, that's not wanting that. And then they come to you, so you've also got that.
They love it when I reject it, don't they?
Sure. Um, but.
Yes, we do.
I, sometimes it goes the other way.
Such a sin, Steve.
You know, I I've worked with the planning commission for over twenty years and it seemed like in in the past, years ago, it would be the planning commission that would reject things and take it to the city commission, then they would overturn the planning commission and now it's kinda, you know, so. It's kinda interesting how that works, but anyway, so that that is why I took that approach, I did see that. But I was concerned on changing from that public to private, you know, because it seemed like the the code was intending for the public governmental entities and and so that's why I didn't end up going that direction, so.
Well, would that be something that we would wanna consider? Making a more defined definition?
Yeah, you could.
And that way you wouldn't have to revisit C two and C four, with that being. I know they have, the public had the chance to come before the.
Right, we basically have to start the whole process over on the text amendment because that requires public hearing. And and remember, they've not got an opportunity to even request their conditional use permit because we, the code as written, they can't even request it. The only thing they could have done, they could have requested rezoning, but it would have been to a heavy industrial use and I don't know that that you want a heavy industrial use right across the street from residential. So we thought that that would be, you know, more powerful for the neighborhood because you don't know what, you know, that that opens up a whole lot of other uses that could create issues. So we thought this was the best way to get that addressed, like I say, you still have control, you can always go back and change it again. If you decide you wanna define that differently, then we could come back and do that again.
Yeah, and and that might be the thing to do is look at the definition to use there so that we could go with the accessory use communication tower for companies like West Star or Atmos. That it's not opening up to somebody that we start getting communication towers and then C two and C four.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna be snowed under right now with a big demand to do that, but I think we could bring more control, which zoning is to provide organized development.
Yes.
And when we open it up like we're we're doing to meet West Star, we are asking for potential problems in the future. But West Star's waiting that maybe the the way to approach it is look at the text amendment modifying C two and C four. And then you go back with Jeff and try and define how we can modify the wording in that.
Maybe require it only on the location where their shop facilities or something are at, because, you know, they have utilities all over, you know, the city and the the rightaways and it has to be maybe on their property, not in a rightaway, I mean, those things you would need to consider.
And if you could put into limit of height or type, cause I think that's what we're gonna have to get into when we start looking at at antennas on utility poles. We need some restriction on the height and the type.
Sounded like they're not very large, it sounds like they're rather small, did he describe it to you?
Yeah, they're rather small.
Yeah, they're, in fact, it's kind of amazing how small they are, but I guess they just put a bunch of them around, didn't they?
I think in some of the automated water meter reading systems that they have, a receiver, which is basically an antenna on a power pole that it transmits to that point and then gathers back to another central point, so the the idea of of antenna might need to be defined in scope of size or or some restrictions, so we don't see. You remember, now you probably don't, in the fifties and sixties, the antennas on all the houses? That you get that type of of appearance on all the utility poles.
I wasn't born.
Yeah.
You missed out, yeah, three channels.
Just pointing that out.
He saw it on the History Channel, though.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I I understand what you're saying with that, I think if we could look at how that could be tailored to fit and meet your concerns and and address the rightaway too, that's a critical issue, then then we can always come back and untext amend.
Yes, you can amend it as many times as you would like.
Put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Gary?
I I did note in section three, paragraph N, it says, "The base of the communication tower shall be screened from view with a solid screening fence, a minimum of six inches in height."
Six inches?
That's what it says.
Wow.
I'm guessing that maybe is a typo, it seems like it'd be a trip hazard if it was six inches.
You gotta keep, you don't want the ants climbing it.
I know West Star, on their collector system, they've got about the size of a laptop, just a little device with a little antenna on it and there is one on on Taylor and North Penn. And you'll see them, they're they've added to their pole. And what I've seen on Tulsa, especially out on the west coast, some of these antennas, they're they're making them blend in with the backgrounds of some of these are metal cactus, some of these are metal evergreen or tree tree looking. So they're allowed, but they disguise them as such to where you think, oh, that's a nice cactus and then you realize it's metal, it's not an actual real cactus. But but when you're driving by, it looks like a cactus, so, but it's something that's gonna be coming down the pike here pretty quick.
Yeah.
As they push for five G, so. Okay, then the motion is, I move to approve the modified recommendation of the planning commission and adopt an ordinance to modify communication towers in the permitted and conditional use table to add C two and C C dash two and C dash four as permitted zoning districts for this use with a conditional use permit. Do I have a second?
No second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The planning and zoning really thank you for that, now we can get some rest. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Steve, we appreciate all your efforts.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Okay, next, we're looking at item C. Consider text amendments to Appendix B zoning of the city code relating to Article Four Rules and Definitions. Item two, Article Six Supplementary District Regulations. Article ten, Special Provisions Applying to Miscellaneous Conditional Uses. And item four, Appendix A, listing of permitted and conditional uses, including but not limited to bed and breakfast, boarding and rooming houses and other new additional uses. And these are both four C, okay, Steve?
We we've encountered this as we as we see our our changing of our stays and everything. We actually have, I think it's, there you have George, George, and we've got two of the people who presented their case to us, which have a legitimate, I think it's very good point of what what we're expecting of transient guests and I know we don't like the word transient, but that's what it is. But we saw this is very, very, a very good move, not only that, we will be collecting debt bed tax taxes, the same as. And if if I might, if I might, would you guys like to, if I you might, Commissioners, would you like to hear from two of the people that are really involved in this, or do you have?
Well, we've we've, I have two that would like to make comment on item four C, George is one, and Renita Butler?
Right.
Yes, okay. So the first one that's was Renita. Approached the podium and and you wanna address your concerns about the zoning change?
Yes, my name is Renita Butler.
Okay.
And I have an Airbnb in my home and I've started it a while back, primarily to meet new people. I have a very nice home with two bedrooms that I have, right now I have interns, local interns, they're working at manufacturing companies during the summer. I have a variety of people that come, primarily some to stay because they're working, some to visit relatives, some on vacationing and just going through. It provides a low cost, clean, attractive place for people to stay. And I do it because I've met some very interesting people and and it's it's been very interesting to see the types of people that come through Independence and the advantage of this over just staying in a motel is it's lower cost and it allows a certain number of people to have a be able to be here and to visit and to use our restaurants and and our other things that are available in the community and provide additional income to the community. As far as not disturbing our my my neighbors, I don't allow any alcohol in my house or or any kind of street drugs and there's no parties. The only people that stay there are the people that are registered. And this all goes through the Airbnb internet business. They provide a million dollars in insurance for my home as a as a host. And I have to keep it to certain standards of cleanliness and repair.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Renita.
Thank you, Renita, George? How are you this evening?
I'm good as well.
Okay, good.
My name's George Isley, my wife and I, Julie, we have an Airbnb that we've opened here in town. I don't know that I really came to give you guys a whole bunch of information per se, I know they're kinda new. I guess mainly I just wanted to be here, I guess my goal is to help see that this gets approved. And if you have any concerns, to be able to address those and I guess keep it short. If you've got concerns, be glad to answer any questions or explain to you, you know, if you're not sure exactly what we're talking about. But other than that, just basically be here to answer questions and help move this forward.
You've been open how long?
About what, six weeks, two months ish, maybe two months.
What's your experience so far?
We also have interns in our home for about two months during the summer, so it's basically completely booked right now for for the two months while the interns are here. We've had two other guests so far, we've got it booked for Neowalla, we've got one booked in December for hunting tour. They're doing a deer hunt, I think, they're gonna be here for about almost a week, six days, I think. So, I mean, we've had real good success with it so far. And we expect it to just continue to grow as word gets out and, you know, people are, you know, finding it and they come back hopefully year after year for different activities, events, reunions, funerals, weddings, anniversaries. I mean, there's just numerous, we had one guy came for job interview. And so he needed a place to stay while he was interviewing for jobs and he brought his family with him, they had two kids. Like in ours, it is a whole home, they get the whole house. But we provide a lot of amenities that you can't get in a hotel. We have a playpen that they can use, we have rocking chairs, so if you've got a baby infant, you can rock the baby, you can't get that in a hotel. We don't have it yet, we'll hopefully have a barbecue grill, you know, so if they're gonna stay for a long time, they can actually barbecue. You know, things like that, that you just can't find in a hotel, the kitchen's completely stocked, refrigerator, freezer, appliances, you know, pretty much anything you would find in a normal home. So when you are traveling, that, you know, it's as as comfortable as possible and you don't have to give up any experience of of having access to a house. It's a little different than than hers, but same same basic business mechanics.
On on yours, George, since you, I guess, rent or lease the whole house. What's the input have you got from the neighbors, any concerns or?
Well, ours is kinda nice because two of our neighbors to the north actually are owned by Zion Lutheran Church and School with the parsonage and the preschool. The house next door is, I guess, in my opinion, I would say a vacant blight. It's been empty ever since we've owned the house, which has been seven months now and there's been no activity. They did clean up the backyard a little bit, but no attempt to rent it that I'm aware of, in fact, it was actually brought up that he was maybe gonna try to sell it, but that was four or five months ago and anyway. But I I talked to the lady across the street, she was tickled, I told her what we were doing, she was just tickled to have somebody taken. doing, she was just tickled to have somebody taking care of the property, that, you know, that it would be well-maintained, which is a requirement, like she mentioned. Other than that, I really haven't been around to specifically talk to anybody, but, you know, the fact that we have to keep the house up to certain standards, not any community standards, but just the Airbnb standards, because if a client has a complaint, they file that with Airbnb, Airbnb comes back to us and says, you either fix it or you're done. You know, it's pretty well self-maintained, where, you know, the city really should never really be involved, for all intents and purposes. It's pretty well self-regulated through the Airbnb company or whatever program or whatever you want to call it, I guess.
So for the Airbnb, your organization self-polices the units?
Exactly. Same thing with the actual clients, too. They have to apply, and then they get graded as well, so if somebody comes in and trashes our house, they're going to get negative reviews. So at some point, they're either not going to be able to stay anywhere because nobody's going to accept them, or Airbnb's going to boot them out of the system. So, I mean, you know, the people that we're getting have been vetted, I guess, is kind of the new word, consequently comes back on us, we get reviews as well, and if we get a negative review, nobody's going to want to stay with us. So, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's a pretty high standard, I mean, you sure don't want any negative reviews on your home, so.
So with the text amendment, this probably goes back to Steve. This is addressing bed and breakfast, boarding room houses, and the Airbnbs, but the boarding houses and the bed and breakfast, those are just overs, overviewed by the city, right, and environmentals and that type.
You may want me to answer that. What we, the bed and breakfasts currently are kind of treated like how we're going to treat the rest of them, we're going to make it consistent. They get an occupation license, and it's kind of like a hotel, but it's just a bed and breakfast. We're going to make them all consistent like that, and we're going to come back at a later time and remove the short-term rentals from the Minimum Standards Act, because that's really intended for the long-term people and not for the, these type of short-term rentals that are offered for short-term. And so, as part of that process, for each of these Airbnbs, they will get an occupation license, you know, there'll be some requirements, like, you know, your fire safety inspection, that kind of thing, similar to what we do for like a bed and breakfast or something. So we're going to make that all consistent, and so this is the first step in that, is correcting the conditional permitted use table to make these consistent, where it is, you know, conditional use required in all residential zones, so the property owners within 200 feet have that opportunity when they get these. So, once this goes through, then they will apply for conditional use permits and go through that hearing process for those as well.
Yeah, well, that's what I was getting at, is if I'm looking at being a homeowner in the neighborhood now with this text amendment and the change, then how am I going to respond to somebody, my neighbor wanting to start a, a bed and breakfast is probably less dramatic because you're living there and you have some control of who comes and goes, but the Airbnb where you're renting the house, I think there could be some people saying, well, I don't want that next to me, but hearing the explanation of how Airbnb operates, there should be some assurance to the public that if we approve this text amendment, that particularly in those cases, they're monitored much more stringent than a bed and breakfast would, that you could lose your certification with Airbnb, and then by that, then you would lose a conditional use permit, too, correct?
That will be requirements in conditional.
So, yeah, it's, it's not something that's going to throw a lot of alarms of?
And it's not just houses, I mean, just like Renita has doing a room, and George is doing a house, something may do an apartment, you know, then I think it's in Yodichay, they redid an old fire department and turned it into an Airbnb. I mean, it's just, it's kind of interesting, if you go on their website and just look at even at this area, you know, all the different ways people are doing that, it's just, I mean, they're in all kinds of different structures. It's just, you know.
And Mr. Commissioner, I will tell you that that was one of our concerns as the planning and zoning, is what effect is it going to have on the neighborhood, because now you're going to be putting these in with residential areas, and so what are the neighbors going to think? And what if I'm a neighbor and I want to sell my house, I've got a Airbnb beside me, what's that going to do? And I think, I will tell you, I think we were all reassured or assured that with the organization that they are with, that, that they really police, it sounds like they really police themselves quite well, and as well as the owners. So you're not going to have somebody come in and just put a bunch of trash in and create a nuisance in the neighborhood, and that's where we felt comfortable with, and that's why we're recommending these modifications.
I did see some articles on Facebook, so you know it's true, that people traveling and experiencing Airbnbs and some issues that came up, and the organization did deal with the problem, removed people from the list, and dealt with the issues, so it is a real factor that they don't tolerate violation of their standards, so I think that would be, be good.
And another thing, this was originally started in San Francisco where they had really high rents, and people were renting out pieces of their apartment or having people come stay in their apartments to help them pay their rent. I mean, you could, you could have people that maybe are struggling, you know, limited income or something, that want to rent a room out or something, and this opens up their possibility to keep them in their home longer, and so you could have some of that, too. I could see this really growing as far as more people possibly doing that as well.
I think it's a different option on viewing the country. You see in Europe, the signs that you can rent a room anywhere, you know, they have the sign, and you can travel from town to town and have that option instead of the hotel, and like you say, you get to meet people, you get an insight of the community.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I think we're good. I like the idea that they're strictly, they have strict policies, and they do their own self-policing, so that should bring assurances to anyone that happens to live next, next to one of these Airbnbs, and which would be more stringent than what the limits that the city could put on, on them if it was a bed and breakfast, so if I don't have any more questions, gentlemen, do I have a motion?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it's too long to read.
You can say as stated.
I get that, that's, well, let's do that. Do I have, I make a motion that we approve the text amendment as stated. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, planning and commission.
Read all of that. Thank you, Steve. All right, next, item D, consider bids received for North Peter Pan Road Project. Mike, how are you?
Good. On May 30th, KDOT received bids for the, I guess, the last extension of Peter Pan, there were two bids received, Jeff Graham Construction and Bryant &amp; Bryant. Jeff Graham was a little bidder at $458,096, and KDOT is recommending that we award the bid to them.
I understand that this is, this actually came in well below the engineer estimate in what KDOT?
Right.
Well, that's great, and according to this, KDOT is contributing $300,000. LaBette is to be invoiced $79,048 with a $150,000 maximum. The county has $79,048 to be invoiced, and their maximum limit is $150,000. And then the city, I see, I see a zero. Darn, yeah, hate that. So I understand they have, is it 14 or 15 days that they, if this is approved, that they have to have the documents signed and returned back to?
Right, and it's a 90-day project.
It's a 90-day project, and after that, that 15-day period, did they give a starting date as far as once approved, did the documents are in, have they?
Not that I've seen, this was all kind of put on me at the last minute.
Sure, okay.
There's correspondence and all that.
Okay, okay.
Has this committee done work for us before?
Yes, he's doing the ADA project right now.
Okay, great, okay, thank you.
It's going to take him a while to mobilize, 15 days just to get his bonds and insurance and the contract signed, but he's going to have to get submittals and stinking, so it'll probably be a month or two before he starts.
Sure.
Okay, okay. Well, like I said, I didn't know, that's why I asked. I know he's done some work for Montgomery County, I believe, and he's out of Coffeyville, so.
Coffeyville, he's done some work in Coffeyville.
And I know they've been pleased with the work he's done.
Right.
The county has, anyway.
I think he did some streets in Coffeyville, too.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
It's not great news.
Nope. Okay, I make a motion, I move to authorize the mayor to award the bid to Jeff Graham Construction Incorporated in the amount of $458,096 for the Peter Pan Improvement Project as recommended by KDOT. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, moving on to, whoops. Where are we at now?
Reports, item five.
Oh, okay. We've all had a chance to look at city board minutes, and commissioner comments?
We need to meet to discuss city manager search, the process, we'll go through procedures, similar like we did last time, the options to utilize the league, Kansas municipality services again, or if we want to go a different direction, but we'll need to have some time to go over what we want to do and how the transition will take place, and also, do we want a special meeting? It sounds like, what's Wednesday's meeting, its budget?
Budget and the figurement.
So, we'll need to have a, we want to probably have a meeting before our next commission meeting to get some legwork on this.
I'd say the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Tuesday?
That'd be fine. How's your schedule work for Tuesday?
Probably fine. What, what time of day are we thinking?
You like early, don't you?
I do, yeah, but I can do anything, probably.
Well, I wondered, do we want to meet at nine o'clock Tuesday morning?
That would be great with me.
I'm good.
On the 16th.
Okay, nine o'clock, and that is, that is the 16th, is that right?
Yeah.
Sixteenth of July? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I might just briefly point out that last time we did work with the league, as Leonard mentioned, and they, they got us a phenomenal list of candidates, I think there were like 87 candidates they got us last time, and their fee is extremely reasonable, $6,000. So you might want to reach out to them.
Okay.
Nikki Harrison is the person there that handles these searches, and it's a far, far less costly option than talking with a headhunter or anything else we found last time.
Sure, if I remember right, when I looked at this, or read this, I think when the fee, less than $5,000.
I can, I can look that up, and I can get Nikki's contact information.
I just talked to her before the meeting.
It was, yeah, okay, and I knew when Coffeyville went through their process, they used the league, and then I think they maybe even reached out to another group that they looked at, and I don't remember the name of that group, but I know they use the league in identifying candidates to interview, so, yeah, I will, I will do that.
I thought maybe, you know, when we discuss to go over, we can kind of talk what the league did, what we saw, maybe tweak what direction or, I'm sure since the last time, they've changed their system a little bit and modified, but, you know, some of the things that we want them to perform for us would help.
That sounds great.
We can go over that, Tuesday, the 16th.
Nine AM.
Nine.
Yeah. Well, that would be great, I can get input from both of you, because you've been down this road before, and this is, this is new to me, so. All right, do we have any other public concerns? I've got the three here. All right, then, to my favorite part of the meeting, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for your attendance.